Beautiful. She loved it. I'm like, get off, we're going to nutcracker. She's like, what? I'm like, yes, put your red dress on. And she was excited, but it's, that's such a beautiful show too. I mean, again, we're spoiled. The theater, the sets, the everything. Well, we have, we have a nutcracker, a rewarder from the nutcracker. Of course, Elizabeth, of course. We came home with a nutcracker. We came home with a nutcracker this year and I took Marty a picture. I took a picture of the car where she's holding it. And I'm like, I am a total sucker. She's like, well, you know, but again, we're all spoiled. But no, it's, it's, they do a beautiful job with that show.
Where is it now? Because we, last time I saw it was at the line.
It is at the Opera House. And I mean, it's just like, it's just beautiful. And just like talented people doing things that I cannot physically do. It's kind of neat to watch. I never could. They're beautiful. And it's so neat to see all the families there. It was just, it's funny because there's like a window when people are a little too young. And the guy behind us fell asleep. Like, and he was, he was like, tired. So like, go to sleep. And then there was a family at dinner that was at the table over. And it was like two boys that were like teens. And the dad's like, I think that's going to be a one and done for us. And I'm like, not necessarily.
Yeah, and stuff, but yeah, mine, mine.
Because you have, there are, who was it? Herschel Walker, some football player that danced ballet and was talking about how hard it was to utilize your muscles in that way. I mean, to put your whole weight, granted it's not that much, but on your two toes and move around in a methodical thing to a beat.
I do that every night.
Yeah, of course, and forget. I still have my toes. I want you some right now. You ever know, and I might even.
Hey Susan, how you doing?
Break out the nutcracker. Okay.
Hello, Susan.
Hi, hello.
Okay, well, let's get going at seven o'clock. You're going to call the meeting to order.
Oh, we got to go on, call down. Thank you very much.
Okay, good evening. It's December fifth, two thousand and nineteen. We're here for our regularly scheduled Newmarket School Board meeting. Calling the meeting to order and first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we begin the meeting as we do with all others with an opportunity for public comment. I just remind folks that comment is limited to three minutes. And it's limited to map, put on the agenda for this meeting or that we're on the agenda for last. Does anybody wants to speak?
John Bridle, twenty-seven Maple Street. My comments have to do with the budget you're voting on to, that's where this comes in and the warrant articles. The first one is the parent educator contract. I know you guys are negotiating and all of that or wherever it is. When I worked in the district fifteen years ago, when I started fifteen years ago, I valued about Newmarket was the place that they put on the teachers and the staff. One of the things I feel has kind of been at issue is a deterioration of the value of our end staff as a whole. As you're negotiating, I would hope that you are in good faith keeping in mind the, as well as our taxpayers. But our parents deal with the toughest kids and have the toughest job, the school employee. And I say that as a classroom teacher, as a school administrator, that do the toughest job. The other question I have is, I see the inclusion of a senior level district administrator. That's yours budget. I'm aware that an interim was hired for this year. I would implore the board, if the budget is approved, that they think about going through a full vetting process involving all stakeholders and not just rehiring a placeholder for that position. Because I feel we need to make sure we're getting the best candidate for Newmarket. Lastly, I feel like the last few budgets have been building centric, have been keep the taxes low because we got new buildings and not focus on quality education. As you are building this budget and approving it, I would ask that you seriously consider, is this the best quality? Is this the best interest of kids when building this budget? I don't feel it had been done. I feel building was put above the educational quality. So I would ask, implore you, as you vote for it, to think about that question. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, I didn't have time to print. Dawn Russell, twenty-two New Road. I wanted to speak tonight. I wasn't unable to come to the last meeting, but I'm here speaking to you as a taxpayer, as a parent with children in the district, and as an educator. And I'm frustrated with some of the issues that seem to be unresolved at this point in time. Again, keeping on minds of a budget, we are paying for an administrator right now at the high school and we are not receiving his services. And that's upsetting to me. And despite what administration has been telling us, I can tell you from multiple perspectives in that building that we are floundering without a captain at the helm at the high school. There are a lot of responsibilities of a principal. And I'm really concerned as a parent about who is picking up the slack while that position is not being filled in its entirety. Particularly, you know, budget preparation, which we are undergoing right now. I'm concerned that that voice is not here. Guiding new administration, we have new guidance counselors in that building. And I have a junior who's in the process of getting ready for college. Who's guiding them? Who's guiding these people? And who's doing the teacher evaluation and supervision right now? Because I think that is a critical piece. And again, to piggyback off of John's comments, making sure that we have quality education happening in our classrooms. And if there's not somebody in there supervising and evaluating, I'm not sure how we're ensuring that. I don't know why Mr. Mazzoni has not been back in his position, but I would like to just take a moment and ask you to remember that there are a lot of pieces to that role. And if you feel as a board that he is not performing adequately in a particular area or in a responsibility, then I think that you need to take action and I think you need to take action now. But before you do, I would like you to seriously ask yourself if the area of inadequacy is something that can be improved with coaching or guidance. Because if it is, as a taxpayer, I'm in favor of doing that. Namely, because he's a known entity. We know Mr. Mazzoni. He might not be a perfect principal. I've worked for a lot of them over the past twenty-four years. I haven't met one yet. But there are some things that we know about him. Most importantly, the connections that he is able to make and the respect that he has earned, not only from the students, but from the vast majority of the community. So with that, I don't think that's something that can be taught and I don't think that it's something that can be hired. So I'd like you to weigh the pros and cons and think about, you know, what we know versus the unknown. And is this something that is worth our investment in time to get what we want, knowing that we already have some pieces of what we do want? As far as the budget is concerned, I am concerned that we are one of the smallest districts in the state and yet we are one of the most top-heavy with SAU administrators that I am aware of for a size as small as we are. And we have this beautiful new building that's just about done. Do we have what we need to fill it? And are the people that are making the biggest impact on our kids, the ones that are being hired? Like John said, the paras that are in the trenches every day, supporting the teachers so that they can support every child, not just the ones with the heavy needs, but the ones that need the challenges. And the ones to assist every single child that needs somebody advocating for them. I want to make sure that when you're looking at your budget, that you are taking that money that the taxpayers have allocated to us and you're putting it where it's going to be making the biggest impact on the classrooms and the teachers. And I question whether or not that's happening right now. We have a quality building. I hope you're not going to be lacking in teachers. I think we need quality teachers to fill it. And I think that we need a captain to steer this ship and we need it now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi there. I'm Mike Willer, twenty-six Maston Drive.
I'm Mike.
I actually hadn't planned on saying anything tonight. I was just going to come and observe, but I wanted to introduce myself because I did send an email to the board the other day. And Dr. Givens, I sent, I sent an email to you previously. And I just wanted to echo my support for Principal Mazzoni. And I know there's a lot of information that needs to remain private and confidential based on whatever's going on with Principal Mazzoni. And I respect that. But what I do ask is, is that we as a community and teachers, or as parents rather, are informed as much as we can on the status of what's going on with Principal Mazzoni. I'll say, I'll echo what I said in the emails, that as a parent, I respect him highly. And my, my children who are all in the sky, I have three children in the high school and they, they look up to Principal Mazzoni. So I really just wanted to put a name to the face and let you know that, that I was the one that sent the email and just introduce myself. So thank you for considering that and I appreciate what you do.
Thank you.
Anyone else? No further comment? Okay. Thank you for coming tonight and sharing your thoughts. We appreciate it. So the next item on the agenda is under reports and the student representative will give a report. Taylor?
Yeah, so basketball has started up along with some other sports. The girls varsity basketball has a game Wednesday, December eleventh versus Portsmouth Christian Academy at seven PM. And then they have another game Friday, December thirteenth at five thirty PM versus Sunapee. The boys also has a game that Friday at seven PM versus Sunapee. Varsity indoor track has also started and they have a meet December fourteenth at, in Durham at like the Swayze Building. The swim team has also started and they have their first meet December twenty-second at the Swayze Pool in Durham at eight AM. But you can come later if you feel like coming. You don't have to come as early. PSAT scores are coming out December ninth. The robotics club is having a meeting tomorrow after school. And Model UN has also decided they are going to be competing in the New York City Model UN Conference, which is really exciting. This is our second overnight conference and we'll be representing the United Republic of Tanzania. So that's really exciting.
Interesting.
Keep you updated. Thank you.
Thank you. Since the school board committee reports, the building construction is still on schedule. The, and still on budget and the demolition is underway by a couple of weeks in the, in the nineteen twenty-nine or portion of the building. Over the past couple of weeks, there's been trucks out there, which unfortunately say, I think like disaster recovery. So when you drive by, there's nothing, you know, it's just, it's, it's regular abatement. When they find things, they have to get right in there. That's why they're in there at night. The roof over the cafeteria is close to done. That is, that whole space should be available for the kids to use, the cafeteria, done, done, where they come back like on, on the first of January, January second, I should say. It's really neat space. We're going to plan to hold tours of both buildings in advance of, of the March vote. It's, it's kind of tough to do it all right now because the, you know, you got parts of the building shut off because of the construction. But folks who haven't seen it, it's pretty impressive, the, the new sections. Nothing else going on, on the, on the construction front?
Budget meets Monday.
The PD committee meeting was postponed until next month because we had a budget meeting that day and then it was snowy as well. So we, beginning of January, having a meeting, we'll have an update next month.
Great. Okay, so we're on to the, let's, do we have the warrant articles, proposed warrant articles that council drafted up that are in the packet of materials? Take a look at those. And Susan, if you want to lead that discussion?
Sure, so I had asked council if they could prepare the language that we might use in the upcoming budget cycle for our bond interest warrant for the collective bargaining warrant article for the paraprofessionals. And also, there's a third one here that the elementary school PTA had forwarded to me for us to consider. And so those are the three. There's a couple of different choices she gives us in how we may want to structure the bond warrant article. So the first one is just to combine everything in one lump sum. And the second one separates it out, which we had talked about the last time, into two, you know, two parts. One, that's to use money to restore any money that we take out of the facility trust fund so that we'd have money available in case there was emergency that we could access, you know, during the year. So that would be one. And the other one would be to move forward with, you know, renovations or improvements that weren't part of the original part of the scope of work. So, so she's given us language to do it either as one or to do it in two parts. And at our meeting on the seventeenth, we'll have the numbers to populate this. Marie needs to have a chance to contact the bank and find out, you know, how much interest we'll get on that last CD because we're going to have to break it because we'll need, need some of the money to pay our contractor before that one expires. So we'll get some money, we just won't get the full amount. So she's going to research that and then we'll have money, the dollar amounts to put in there for that. So we have a choice. We don't have to decide now. You can think about it, but I thought it would be, you know, helpful if we got this on the agenda. In case there was anything you wanted to change or, or had a question, I could, you know, take it tonight and then ask council to provide us with any clarification you would like. Instead of getting to the seventeenth and then you had the questions and then I wouldn't be able to have the opportunity to do that in time for you to vote and get it before the budget committee, so.
Yeah. A couple of things, just to refresh folks that are here or who might be watching. The first warrant article pertains to so-called bond interest. You know, when you have, you know, nearly forty million dollars sitting there, it accumulates quite a bit of interest and it's anticipated to accumulate, I don't know, seven hundred and fifty to eight hundred thousand dollars by the maturity of the CDs. You know, until we, until we break the last one to pay ongoing construction bills. So over the, over the fall, really, there's been an extensive process within the schools, within the building committee to take a look at everything. Where are we at? We're in the, we're in the rooms now, in some of the rooms. A survey went out to teachers and admin to say, hey, what are you missing? Are you missing an outlet here? Are you missing, you know, a particular aspect? We also had, from the design development process, a running list of so-called add alternatives. Things that would be, would enhance the program, but we could do without if the budget didn't allow for it. And, and of course, you don't know in renovating an old building how much you're, you know, exactly going to spend till you get towards the end of it. So it's tough to commit to any big things, but we reached a point this fall where we thought we could start to narrow those down. So that's what we're talking about with that warrant article. There's a whole list of those things that it's in prior meeting minutes, recent prior meeting minutes that the building committee scoured through along with the, you know, with the, the board upon the advice of the, of folks in the buildings. And, and we came down to a list of things that we thought made sense to pursue. That's what that warrant article is about and, and again, pertains to what I was talking about earlier. It'd be nice for folks to get in there to see why, you know, if we had just a little bit more to, to put extra things in there, it would enhance it ever so, ever so much. We can't use it on other things, but it can be used towards, towards building construction. So, so that's, that's what that one's all about.
Yes. And the next one, of course, we've been engaged in conversation with the paraprofessional group since September, August or September. We've met four times now. We have two more all-day sessions scheduled, one for next Wednesday and one for the following Wednesday. So, you know, we're, we're hopeful that we'll be able to come to agreement. We've released the paras all day for those two days. We're working with a mediator to help us to move forward in the process. So our last session was really, I think, positive. I think we had some forward movement there, some clarification about what was important to both parties. So I'm, I'm pretty optimistic that we'll be able to come to an agreement that's, that's fair and to both parties. So happy to report that.
And just, just so, again, just I know in our busy lives, we're not necessarily involved, but just to explain kind of what's going on further with that, if I can. It's, it's, there's a collective bargaining process. You may already know this, some of you. And, you know, each side, we have counsel that's, you know, particularly skilled in that area. And they have a representative. And those four sessions include Elizabeth's on the team, Al was on the team, Susan, you know, on the school side. And then a, a group from, from the union on their side with their representative. And they literally, I think they sit at this table and, and try to, you know, they raise issues and negotiate. Just as you would imagine, try, try to reach a middle ground. So that, that's what's going on.
So once that agreement has, has come to fruition and contracts have been ratified by both parties, then this would be the format that we use to bring forward their new CDA before the town. So, so that's what that, that one is, so that we have it handy. And then the last one, the elementary school PTA, as you know, has been doing some fundraising to be able to address some of the needs we have at the playground at the elementary school. It wasn't part of the building project and the equipment there is rather old and is in need of replacement. So they have been working with our facilities director to come up with a plan. And it was put forth before the CIP as a proposal. And they'll continue to fundraise, but what they would like is to see if the board would establish a little trust fund like we have for facilities now. And then at the end of the year, if there's any money that's left unspent, that we could transfer up to fifty thousand dollars into that fund to set aside to help offset some of those costs or to cost share in getting the playground replaced. So this is the language that would enable that to happen. Another, she gave us two options. One is to set up a capital reserve fund for that purpose and the other one's to set up a trust fund. A third option could be that you do the same thing and you put it into the facilities trust fund you already have. You know, knowing that a certain amount of that is targeted for the playground. So there's a few options, you know, and certainly you can think about, read through this and think about what way you might want to consider doing that. I suppose you could do that for other trust funds that you have by establishing, you know, these parameters at a town meeting. But they, they would like us to consider that. And I don't, you know, see why that shouldn't be put in the mix along with, you know, other things that may crop up.
I just had one question, Susan, about it. And it's probably self-explanatory and probably not reading it right. But the surplus, where does that surplus come from? Is that the surplus of PTA funds or another, a surplus from us?
A surplus from us. So if we get to the end of the year and it's a bust and we don't have any money, then we don't have any money. But if we would have some surplus, that we'd have the opportunity to use some of that surplus to fund the playground and set it aside specifically for that purpose. It doesn't obligate you to just do that. So if we had other needs that were pressing, you know, you could consider all of that, but this would at least be a, a vehicle to be able to move some money. If, I don't remember how much you had last year. I think we had a half a million dollars last year. But you won't have that this year. You know, that was an unusual year. And, but if you had fifty thousand, let's say, and, and there was some cameras, let's say, security cameras we wanted to add for fifteen thousand and put ten thousand here and, and something else, this would give us a mechanism to be able to do that and set it aside in a fund that could start to accumulate. So as they're raising money, we're setting aside some so that, you know, we get to the goal quicker.
So if we put it under facilities, then it would be, under facilities, and it would say that on the warrant article. But if we put it under its own trust fund, then people might be more receptive to it, to put it towards just that playground. Do you know what I'm saying? Like it's, because then you know it's for the kids.
I mean, it, it really all is, isn't it? But I mean, Mike, a couple of things on this. If there's a safety issue with any of the equipment, I think we need to address it now.
Yeah.
Right? And, and not wait. And it seems like this funding thing is, is, in addition to that issue, which, which is, we, you know, it's all a separate issue. If there's an issue of safety, deal with it now. And then second, if we're going to fund something like that, I think we discussed this a little bit last time. It would strike me that it would, it would go into the latter proposal into a, into a, into sort of a, not a peculiar trust fund for the playground because you could do that with a million different things in a school. And now you've got all these different funds and you, you know, it gets kind of confusing. I think it, I think it has to do with the, the physical facilities. It's part of the, it's part of the fixtures, if you will, you know, be it a building or, or playground equipment. So I, I think it would go into, you know, logically, it would go into that. And I'd be a little concerned about, you know, I think if this is, like I said, first and foremost, if there's a safety issue, deal with it now. But if it's more of a updating and replacing and it's not at all a safety issue, then that'd be considered as in part of the overall, like we've done with everything. Priority, priorities of capital improvement plan, you know? And, and, you know, the facilities folks and the folks at the school would know best as to what their, those, you know, prior, where those priorities lie. You know, this, maybe there's something else. If it's not a safety issue, maybe there's something else in front of it, you know, at the end of the day. I don't know. But, you know, the, the request is certainly appreciated. I just think we, we can't consider it in isolation. Yeah.
So those were the three and this would be, you know, the options for language you might want to consider when you move forward. So those were the three, and this would be, you know, the options for language you might want to consider when you look forward to town meeting eventually. So I don't know if we can finalize that at the next meeting. I just figured I'd get it out in case you had any questions and you wanted me to, you know, ask the attorney any additional questions you might have.
It read pretty clearly to me on its face.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, again, we can
Thank you for that.
Take action on that at the next meeting. In your package is NASDAQ information someplace.
It is after the article.
It's in yours. Oh, there it is. There it is. So every year, we submit some information to NASDAQ, and I think every school district in New England does the same thing. And my prior school district did as well. And then they provide you with some enrollment projections that give you some insight into, you know, what your enrollments might look like moving down the road.
This is New England School Development Council. I forget the name every time, but they prepare these projections pretty much for all districts, enrollment projections, and they have formulas and, you know, certain indicators, birth rates, home, new home permits, things like that. They come up with a projection. They've usually been pretty close historically. Sorry.
Yep. And so that, it's just for your information. Obviously, getting this at this point, we've already developed the budget. I had done some enrollment projections, since I knew we weren't going to have this, that helped inform our budget proposal. And I will go upstairs now and get it off the printer for you so that you can
Yeah, this is interesting, and we can talk about this one.
Yes.
I just, the, right now, I mean, for this coming year, our enrollment was, I think it's going to be slightly over a thousand projected at the high school, which, you know, an incidental, I think that puts us into Division Two athletics. I don't know how many years
This is K through twelve.
You have to stay there. I mean, yeah, we're up above, what was the, the high school, the limit, was it six hundred?
It's, in the high school, we're above, we might go above three hundred, which would put us in Division Three.
In junior year, okay.
I think it's, I think it's by the high school, yeah.
So three hundred is the magic number.
Yeah.
And I don't know how, how many years you have to be above that, or, I wouldn't think they, you'd be in it for one year and you'd change divisions, because that would be kind of chaotic.
Right? Because that could happen according to this, right?
So this was, this is not really for any other purpose, other than it just came out. So, you know, I don't know, it's not, it's kind of consistent with the budget assumptions, enrollment projections, so nothing, nothing new there.
The long-term trend's interesting.
The decline.
Yeah.
Yeah, just
Or projected, right?
So folks in the audience, what is the projected? For two thousand twenty, I think it was, it says one thousand fifty for our entire district, and then out to two thousand twenty-nine, nineteen years from now, it's, says it's down around nine hundred total.
No, nine years from now.
Nine years from now. It's been a long week. Yeah. Yeah, that was too optimistic. So that's, that's pretty interesting.
I wonder if it's because they don't, you know how they projected the birth rates here?
Yeah, they're decreasing
They have the birth rates.
Yeah.
The new houses and
Yeah, it goes from twenty twenty, it's, they're predicting a hundred and two births, and then twenty twenty-one, ninety-seven, and then ninety-seven for the next few, and then a spike in two thousand twenty-four. So who knows what might happen?
But this is, it's a ten percent decrease.
Probably trends, I don't know.
When people have babies. It has been spot on.
Yep.
It's a ten, ten percent decrease in move day there. Although, I think, I think that one thing that Susan had mentioned at another meeting is that, is that with the new school facilities, it's possible we could drop more people in than, which may not be accounted for in these numbers.
What's not accounted for either is people moving out of districts, retirees moving out, new families moving in.
Right.
Right. So you just, that's, that's a total estimate.
It's, when we were doing the building, they processed, they admitted that when you start looking out over three years, you know, the curve in terms of accuracy, three years is good, usually spot on, but after that, it kind of, the further you go out, and that makes sense. But I guess we can get into talking about the article, Jen, if you'd like to begin that.
Sure. Let me get myself organized here. All right. So continuing in our series of readings, for this week, we're, so we're educating ourselves by reading an article for every school board meeting to help us be better school board members. So anyway, to continue in our, our series here, I'm going to summarize the article for this week. One thing that I like about this is that this will be in the minutes, it'll be online. So if anybody's interested in these things, anybody can read them. And one of the great things about this article, which is titled "The Role of Local School Board in Improving Student Learning", by Cindy Kopacz, is that it also has a lot of, a lot of resources in the article itself that we can look up and learn more about. So, so that was good. It was, it was a good article for me, academic article. Harkening back to my student days. Anyway, I thought it was interesting. She recognizes that traditionally, school boards have, have not been particularly hands-on in the, on student achievement. And so it's, it's been the school board creates policy, and the superintendent helps make sure that's implemented. And we've read a lot about how we have to have clear roles, about what's the school board roles and what are the job of the superintendent, and there has to be a clear distinction there. However, there is a movement towards school boards becoming, or sharing in the accountability for student achievement. And consistent with that, this year, we have, in our goals, we've made it clear that our number one priority is student development and achievement. So our, what we're going to be focusing on moving forward is how can we support improved student development and achievement in our district? So, so we need to become a little, we need to be more hands-on while maintaining our role. So that's the trick. Thank you. And Yes. Yeah, I'm sorry. I should say, jump in anytime.
No, I just think, when I read it, like, the more hands-on part is, it's a tricky thing, because the more hands-on this article talked about was becoming more learned as a board about educational goals and development, development goals for children. And, you know, we'll have a presentation here from time to time about those things. But our yearly goals, ultimately, after a visioning process, should be directed at that. That's how we should measure ourselves, right?
Yeah.
I mean, that's the bottom line.
Yeah.
John's shaking his head, so I must be right. So, so that's, that's why we're sort of, we're getting at all this. It's not for us to exceed our role in terms of hiring. Our one and only hire is the superintendent. And that's not only by policy, but by law. We don't hire anybody else. We don't get involved in other hirings or firings or disciplines or other things like that. So that's not what this is talking about. We don't get involved in the day-to-day operations of the schools. We don't drop in on the SAU office on the day-to-day, geez, we ought to, we think you ought to be doing this in the business office or that. We have an oversight role, but it's, it's, it's just logical that we would not get, you know, by our policies, by law, illogically, we wouldn't get involved in that. It just mucks up any organization. It's not unique to school boards or school districts, any corporation. Where there starts to be role drift, things get dropped and, you know, you know, people feel micromanaged.
Right. Well, and that, the other thing I liked about this article is that the findings are based on a fifteen-year longitudinal study on, that distinguishes between high-performing and lower-performing school districts. And one of the things that they point out is that the micromanagement, the managing at the building level is not associated with, with good outcomes. So, so that, so I think that they're trying, she's trying to clarify that we need to become more learned. We need to make data-driven decisions, which I know that Susan is passionate about, and I'm excited to see the data that will help us to make the good decisions. But it does not mean micromanaging the schools. And in fact, that, that would be a detriment. So.
Can I add to that part two? And it's, and there has been such a focus, right? I mean, even for five years since I've been on this school board, and even before that, even, you know, when I moved to town back in two thousand and three, it's been all about the building, getting that issue resolved, right? I mean, it's sucked up all the oxygen. It's run through numerous superintendents and others and school board members. And it's, we're getting towards the end of that issue, you know, it's time to refocus. But one thing I think we can learn from that whole facilities process, you know, the last part of it, the success of it, was, in part, I really enjoyed as a school board member, was getting out in the community and describing to people what that meant and answering their questions. So I think as a school board, you know, consistent with these articles, we have an obligation to educate ourselves on student development and what those goals should be. But we also have an obligation to get out there and get the community involved in it. And I'm hoping that when we turn this corner from the building, that we can really focus in on that, because we, it ain't going to be just us. You know, we need community buy-in. We need, we need folks to understand what the, you know, what the visioning, they need to be part of the visioning process in the community and understand where we're going.
Absolutely. And that is one of the, I guess, five factors that was identified as distinguishing between school boards that help with their student learning, improve their student learning, and those that don't. And that is with engaging and educating stakeholders. So not just educating ourselves and evaluating ourselves and setting our own goals, but involving the community. And last meeting in our, the report on our goals, they, that we went over our goals, which, by the way, are nicely tied, our goals are tied to the superintendent's goals, which are tied to the teacher's goals at both schools. But, but you have a lot of nice committees that we would love people to serve on. We've got for students, for teachers, for parents, there's a nice list of them to ask for, you guys, to help us with, with making those decisions. So, so I think that's great. And I know that you've also started reaching out to the public library and the rec center. And have you been to the senior center? I can't remember yet, but that
I haven't been to the senior center.
Yeah, we need to, we need to introduce you to our senior center. And then we've got UNH just down the road. I mean, there's a lot of community partners that can help us and that can, that can educate us, but also that, that, you know, it can be a two-way street. So, so I think that that was one of those, those five, that, that, you know, it's, it's great that that's what you really love to do. Because that's something that's absolutely needed. I mentioned informed decision-making was another one, data-driven informed decision-making that is public. This is where we make our decisions, here, in front of the cameras and with Sarah taking really good notes on us. And so, so, so we're doing that. And then back to the setting clear goals with high expectations, which you've really helped us to start to build those goals. And now what we need to do is move along in that process and collect the data and evaluate, and evaluate the data and see where do we, where are we doing well, where do we need to direct more resources? And I'm not just talking about monetary resources, but effort and that sort of thing. So, so I can see where it looks like, you know, there's a number of ways in which we're moving in the right direction. And I think, starting with, as you pointed out, the focus on student development and achievement. And, but then we can see where, she's giving us advice on where do we go from there. So I think it was very helpful. Like I said, I, I think that it shows what, what's associated with well-performing districts, and it also shows what, what can get in the way. So the micromanagement that you mentioned can, is actually associated with, with not-so-high-performing districts. Also, high turnover of school board members, for political reasons in particular. I thought that was interesting. That it was not just turnover, but for, but for political reasons, that that is associated with, with lower performance and also a high turnover rate in superintendents is another. When you don't have the consistency, when you don't have the stability, you can start an initiative, and then it doesn't get to follow through because you don't have the consistency there, so.
And then the community's like, well, what happened to this?
Right.
And we're sitting here saying, well, we don't know, but have you met Mrs. Dr. Givens? This is our new superintendent. It's, it, there's no consistency. And in the, in the seven years I've been here, that, that's the one thing. Everybody does it differently. It is always a new initiative, and there's always change. And it's like, okay, let's get behind this superintendent. I think what I like about this article, it talks about how do you keep a superintendent? How do you keep your staff?
Yes.
You know, clear goals, high expectations. That's what I like about it.
And, and shared accountability, right? So we share in the accountability for the student development and achievement. And we're not just leaving up to the superintendent and the teachers, but that, that our goals are important in seeing that through.
And just, you know, I guess, say it again, I've said it at other prior meetings, is that this stuff is hugely important, but it doesn't happen overnight. You know, and it takes some foundational work, and that's really why we're, you know, we're starting, you know, with this sort of effort and reading and reading up on it. I know Susan is chomping at the bit to get at visioning. But in order to do that, you need to understand what you have. You know, you know, I think in doing this reading, you know, it seems what's happened with well-meaning administrators over the years is they may come in and have ideas about how could they improve the delivery of education. And yet, you know, right away, try to implement those things. You really need to understand what it is you have. What is it you do well? What is it you're missing? So this is, in the first year, that's, you know, part of, you know, Susan's goals to sort of look at that, you know, broadly and across the district. And then, you know, a year, you know, less than a year maybe from now, building's done, Susan's settled in, then we start working on a visioning process, where we start to examine our, you know, things like curriculum, vertical and horizontal integration, you know, teacher development, and things like that. It's not as if those things are unaddressed entirely now. They aren't. But one challenge you have when you have turnover, and Jen, you kind of alluded to this, is that you get kind of scatter shot with a bunch of different well-meaning initiatives, but no carry-through, you know, and no overall integration of each initiative. You know, a person comes up with an idea and it gets, it gets moved, but how does it fit into the overall plan? I think is what we're, where we're wanting to be. And it will be a community-wide effort, that visioning process. It'll be involved teachers, paras, administrators, everybody, you know, you know, we get it, we have to enlist in that effort, so. Any other thoughts on the article? Thank you, Jen. Appreciate it. Just on that front, you know, we're gonna, I don't have the title right in front of me, you know, it's a, it's a board development book. And we had endeavored to get that fully read by December seventeen. I think that's ambitious. How about this? That's another term. How about this? We, let's pick that up after next meeting. And what I would suggest is that we just cover the first chapter, okay?
So the first chapter for the first meeting in January, is that what we're planning on?
Yes, yes. And we'll, we'll add that to the agenda and
Oh, Marty has the book.
Yep, that's it.
Building Great School Board Superintendent Teens: A Systematic Approach to Balancing Roles and Responsibilities.
Yeah, it would be it would be ambitious to try to just tackle that all at once. So let's just do it one at a time. What next? So we we finished the enrollment, talking about that. I didn't, I don't know, Susan, if you had any particular thoughts on the enrollment projections? I mean, they they seem pretty close to what you.
Yep, they seem pretty close. I didn't see any. I've had compared, you know, enrollments using, you know, similar methods over the course of my career. And, you know, Nezdecs aren't that far away from, you know, what I happen to do locally. So I found that it's a reassurance, you know, when you look at their numbers and especially this being my first year here, to make sure that, you know, there's nothing I'm missing. And I I felt comforted that their enrollment projections were very similar to mine.
Great. All right, so let's go back and we have before you the the budget draft. We've been over several times now. Susan, I don't know if there are any any things you want to point out?
Well, it's similar to what you saw before, but integrated. So the financial pieces and components that support the, you know, the educational plan for next year have been, you know, woven together. Spent the portion of the day today pulling that together along with the principals and Erica. So we're feeling pretty confident that we've we've covered all the bases. What you'll see in the introductory section is a summary of what we're asking for in this proposal. We talked first about the enrollments, that we're looking at a, you know, overall one percent increase in enrollments, but the impact of that is different at each grade level and at each school. So at the elementary school, we're looking at about four additional students. At the junior high, we'll be looking at less because the eighth grade coming up is much larger than the current population that's coming in. And at the high school level, it's a similar pattern, where we have more kids coming in and a very small senior class. So we're looking at an overall increase of about twenty-two students at the high school next year, which will bring us over three hundred. I did reach out, but have not heard back about whether that means that we're moving a division or not. But I did reach out and send a note to have that question researched. I just don't happen to have the information for tonight. The population that's here on page two represents all students in our school district. When you get back into the, deeper into the document where you're looking at the schools, you'll see the numbers are a little different. And the reason why is because it does not include our students who are in out-of-district placements. Because when you're planning for classes at the local level, at the building level, you want to know how many kids you're going to be providing an education to. So where those kids are out of district, you know, they're they're deducted from the enrollments at the building level. So so these numbers, when you look at them, are going to be all students and theirs are only going to be the students that that we anticipate will attend there. So that's a little highlight. And then in terms of staffing, we're we're asking for an increase, as you know, of several teaching positions at the high school level, an assistant superintendent, as we have some curricular deficiencies. The issue of extremely high turnover rates, especially at the secondary level, without, you know, good programming for mentoring and support for teachers, is, you know, over the last couple of years, has has had an impact on teaching and learning in the buildings. So restoring that will enable us to be able to strengthen ourselves in the academic service area as well as in recruitment and retention of staff. I provided an appendix, which is that summarizes the request for an assistant superintendent, the rationale for that. I provide some information there also on the turnover ratios. You know, it's this year, eighteen point, and this is just certified staff. This isn't paraprofessionals and all the other folks that it takes to run a program. But last year, you know, we lost eighteen point eight percent of our certified staff at the junior and senior high school level. The average turnover ratio in the last year was seventeen percent, and that's a fairly consistent number, unfortunately. Very difficult to make academic gains if you have your certified staff turning over at that level. So we need to make some changes. And, you know, couldn't agree more with the folks here today, you know, suggesting that we need to, you know, turn our eyes towards, you know, the teaching and learning side of the the equation because, you know, we have some some needs. We have some curricular deficiencies that need to be attended to. So this budget proposal looks at some ways that we can start to bridge some of these gaps. None of this would be wasteful. In other words, when we go through the visioning process next year, it's we're not adding this to then subtract it and retool later. These these will be improvements that will help to support the growth and development and the shift that we need to make to keep our eye on the prize, which is the growth, development, and achievement of all of our students here in Newmarket. So.
You know, and we, our community started that last year when they approved the CBA for the teachers.
Yep.
You know, that that, so now we're saying, okay, now, in order to keep those teachers here, we're paying them now, we feel comfortable with what we're doing. Now we need to make sure that they're getting mentored. They need, they're getting their needs met and they want to stay in that building. And this is part of, that's part of that.
And another part of that is developing these partnerships and relationships so that we're accessing, you know, young talent that's coming out of the schools around us. We don't have those kinds of relationships built here. Maybe you did at one time, but they they aren't here now.
Yeah.
And that's another, you know, component of what we're looking for an assistant superintendent to be able to do. So, you know, I'm excited, you know, about the prospects of having this proposal move forward to the budget committee and advocating on behalf of the students in our schools. In addition to that, of course, you know, we have an expanded facility that requires more staff to clean and maintain. And there was also a promise to the community that when the buildings were open, that the that the community would have access to them. So this proposal also includes coverage for custodians to do some maintenance, to maintain our buildings on the weekends, as well as provide security and access, both for teachers to come in, which has been something that the teachers' union has been asking me, if they can can please have access to the building on the weekend, which is, you know, just warms my heart to know that they want to be here on the weekends to help develop learning opportunities for our kids. So this proposal will allow us to have people access our buildings on the weekend. And and so we're happy, happy about that as well. So.
And then two, two teachers?
Two teachers. Yep, two. At the, at the, at the senior high to expand program offerings there. We have an awful lot of students taking core courses through V-Lax. V-Lax is not what I would consider to be the ideal, high-quality learning experience that you'd want for your students. We've been meeting with the staff at the high school, the assistant principal that we have now is a very accomplished secondary school administrator who is, you know, comes from, you know, high-performing schools, is very familiar with the curriculum. And so we've been working on refreshing the program of studies and the teachers are very excited about that. It's nice to, again, turn the corner and and be looking towards what do we want to be offering students next year? So we probably had staff make suggestions for maybe twenty-five new course offerings. We wouldn't, you know, some of those would have to be rotated through, you know, as we manage our program of studies. But some of the exciting offerings that we're considering, we're doing focus groups in the next week or so with kids to see, to get a sense of, you know, how they feel about it. But just to to name a few, criminology and forensics, graphic novels, modern American history, twentieth-century civil liberties studied through Supreme Court cases, the struggle for equality, chemistry in everyday life, financial literacy, applied mathematics for technicians, culture and commerce, yoga, mindfulness, introduction to theater, art history with a twist, personal wellness. And I just picked, you know, from each kind of academic area and or elective offerings and and just gave you kind of a preview of maybe some coming attractions.
I like chemistry for everyday life.
Yes.
That's a, that's a great, if you don't want to get into it, you don't want to get into the periodic table and memorize formulas, that would be something more of an academic class, but still a science class. Would that be a science, would that take place as a science?
Yeah, yeah, it would, it would meet a requirement of the science. So it would be, like, for example, a unit might be chemistry and cooking. You know, so that you're looking or chemistry and horticulture.
Or cleaning class.
So you're looking, exactly. You know, how 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 do the various chemicals interact with one another? You know, what kinds of effects does it have?
Right.
You know, so so that's, you know, really what that would be. So it really speaks to student interests. It it has relevancy to the world in which they live. It makes chemistry fun. And so those are the kinds of courses that we're looking to add. Some of these would be, we're looking at co-curricular. So like, for example, criminology and forensics would be taught through the lens of social studies, you know, criminology, law, as well as the science piece. So when we're looking at DNA and analysis, bring forward a case, you know, there's the law side of that and then there's the science side of that. So some of these would be, are designed to to be done in a co-curricular interdisciplinary fashion, which of course allows students to develop transfer skills between different content areas. It allows them to be able to see how theory then can apply in practice and and to their everyday lives. So we're very excited about being able to offer some of these exciting opportunities for our kids next year and looking forward to being able to publish the program of studies in January and and then, you know, you know, start the master scheduling process. So those are the exciting additions that are included in this.
That master scheduling process with this, I think, in one of the budget sessions. Kind of, like, if you could just refresh us a little bit on that in terms of, you won't know the classes necessarily right now, what those teachers, you listed several, but there are, there is sort of a a pattern to that, setting that master schedule in terms of timing.
Yes. So typically, you would be publishing your program of studies. That's usually done after the second semester, so kids know, you know, how well they've done in the the first semester of their of that year. And they can help to, you know, buil- build their kind of vertical pathway from there. So, you know, high school and middle school are really exploratory in many ways. And students should try elective courses to see what might be, you know, spark an interest in terms of their 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 future. So if a kid's, you know, taking a particular elective, let's say we had an elective in the area of science and medicine or something like that, and they took that for a year, thinking, well, maybe I have an interest in the medical field. If they did take it and they found an interest and a passion, then there should be a vertical pathway for them to move forward. Right now, we don't really have some of those. So so when the program of study is published, you know, kids usually meet with their parents. They'll meet with a guidance counselor, talk to their teachers, and they'll they'll, you know, come up with some ideas about, you know, what courses. Certainly, we have required courses in English and math and science, et cetera, but then there's the elective program. And the elective program is really lacking here. And so kids are taking these V-Lax classes. So then, after it's published, the kids, you know, have three weeks to be able to sign up. That's called course selection. That usually happens right after that semester ends. So typically, in a school, it would be the end of of January and it would close your course course selection, you know, February, just before February vacation. And then you take all of that and you, you know, try to, you know, build your first master schedule. And then thereafter, you're doing balancing and sometimes there's conflicts. You know, we all, if you're like me, you want to take everything, you know, and you can't. And so you have to make some choices. And so usually that process of balancing your classes and all of that happens typically in most, every school district I've ever been, that happens in March. Final adjustments are made in April and students and staff know what they're taking for classes, you know, usually by the beginning of May. So that would be, you know, the standard process that you'd follow in a high school and that would be the process that we would follow here.
And you talked about, for instance, you know, alternating course selections. Like, for instance, you may not want to have AP physics and AP chemistry the same year because that would mean, you know, well, this is at the same time because kids who might take both can't, they just physically can't.
Right. So so what you want to do is maximize the opportunities, you know, for kids. And and if you're offering, let's say, three AP sciences simultaneously with a school of this size, then you're really not going to get necessarily enough students in any of them to be able to run them. So what you do, it's called managing your program of studies. And so you identify in even years, there's certain courses that you offer, and in odd years, there's certain courses that you offer. So the kids have the opportunity through their career in high school to be able to take them. But you also have enough mass to be able to run them. So these are just, you know, best practices, standard practices for managing program of studies in high school. But it's really important, too, that, you know, kids are having conversations with guidance counselor about these vertical pathways to help them make some of those those choices, you know, so that they're saying, you know, I would like to be able to take a couple of AP classes. And you kind of plan, you know, your trajectory around being able to take those and the timing of when those courses are offered. So all of these are just standard best practices for managing a high school. And those those would be the processes that we would follow in the upcoming year. So thank you for asking. I always enjoy the opportunity to talk about that. I also just want to say, that doesn't mean that at the elementary school, we're not adding anything. So I had mentioned that, you know, we have some curricular deficiencies and we have some inquiry groups that will involve multiple stakeholders in the upcoming year. Some of those are looking at handbooks and student support services and programming there, which really helps us to be able to, you know, provide students with social, emotional learning, the development of study skills and other things that help them to be successful in school. But the other part of the equation is the academic services. And so one of the things that we don't have is vertical articulation of our curriculum. And because we haven't had an assistant superintendent, there also hasn't been a continuous review cycle in science, math, reading, social studies. And so we're behind. So most school districts, you know, are further ahead of the curve and obviously they would be because they have somebody that's championing that cause. But standards change. And and so, you know, we need to be looking at our curriculum. We also need to be looking at assessments and seeing how the current curriculum we're offering is serving the needs of our kids. And when it's not, then you want to augment that curriculum or modify it in some way in order to meet student need. If you don't have vertical articulation, so then 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 there isn't this, you know, common sort of experience that enables a student to grow in their learning experience. So if you have a certain program, as we talked about, you know, we have a, we have a reading and writing program at the elementary school now in kindergarten, first and second grade. And then, you know, what we need to have is is we need to look at the third grade because the third grade is the ramp-up to upper elementary school. And so it's a really critical year in the pathway of the students' learning. So when they're going from lower elementary school to upper elementary school, you want to have, be able to take the pass off from the lower level and you want to be able to lift to the next higher level of expectation that we're finding out in elementary. So that's, third grade is a really, really critical year. And so this year, we'll, we have an inquiry group that is is going to identify, you know, gaps and potential needs in the third grade so that we're able to take that and transition kids from lower elementary to upper elementary so that we don't wind up with knowledge gaps that are going to be really hard to fill and will be difficult for the kids to meet the next level of rigor that you would expect of them in the upper elementary levels without having that, those supports in place. So there is resources here in order to support that inquiry so that when we get into next year, if resources are needed, whatever that might look like, that we have the money to be able to fund that. So I just wanted to mention it, even though there isn't a need for staffing there. There are, you know, other than the custodians. there are, you know, other than the custodial, you know, to cover on the, the weekend, that there is resources in here to improve the academic programs at the elementary school as well. So those are the, really the highlights you can go through. You know, there's a narrative for each of the schools. There's some information about the cost impact of those and the highlights. We get into a little more depth. And also, I just want to point out too that there is an appendix, Appendix B, which provides the goals from the board level to the superintendent, down to the building level for this year, and really will inform our work next year as well. So those are the highlights from the proposal. Maybe you want to know what the, the cost will be. So the total cost of, of this educational program is twenty-two million, two-hundred-and-ninety-six thousand, six-hundred-and-thirteen dollars, which represents a seven-point-four percent increase in the total costs. What you'll notice if you look on page four is that this increase breaks down into several components. I broke it out both by building level, but also salary benefits and operating. And so the lion's share of the increase, eight-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand, four-hundred-and-ninety-four, are what, what I would consider to be level service cost increases. So that is the breathing costs to move forward with the existing staff, with the CBA that you had approved, along with, you know, increases for, for other areas that aren't in CBAs other than the para, because that has to be in a separate warrant article. But it also includes the impact with taxes and retirement and everything else. So that's, like I said, just a little over eight-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand.
And those are all the ones the community has already voted on. These are all-
That's for existing staff. That's not for new staff.
Baked in the cake sort of thing.
That's all, all to support existing staff positions we have now, the cost impact of that in the upcoming year. So the total increases that, that are targeted towards improvements, that, the total cost for that is five-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand, one-hundred-and-forty-two dollars. So the majority of this increase of, you know, one-point-five million dollars is kind of baked into level service. You know, it includes, of course, the increases to facilities, which is a hundred-and-some-thousand dollars, you know, to address the, you know, the additional utility needs-
Extra square footage.
And the square footage, et cetera. So all of those are kind of, are baked into the cake already. And, but the programmatic improvements that I've mentioned here tonight would cost the taxpayers five-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars, I mean, five-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand, one-hundred-and-forty-two dollars. And again, I, I don't want to read off numbers. I know that's boring, and, and the public can't really follow it without having the document in, in hand. So I'll just leave the budget summary there and entertain any questions or thoughts that you might have.
Susan, one question I had, it just hit me the other day, was sort of, and I know we can't predict the future, but we had that presentation from Erica a few weeks ago about the whole Medicare reimbursement piece of things. And I'm just wondering, since we don't know what to expect in that regard, should we build in some safeguards or, or just have you had a thought about that? Just so that we're not caught unaware.
I can provide you with, I, the business administrator hasn't been in this week and isn't going to be until Sunday, so I, I wasn't comfortable writing up, you know, I don't have a strong enough understanding of the intricacies of New Hampshire revenue projections. She does. It's, it's not here, I know it's a gap, but I, I would be able to answer that question.
And I, and I don't mean to, to catch you off guard. Just to get me in the car the other day, I thought, that's a whole ball of wax. That's, we don't know what we're going to have to contend with.
No, as I mentioned, you know, when we had that little workshop with Erica, that it's money out of one pocket, you know, and into another. So, you know, the, the decrease in-
The net effect is-
Yeah. So we had gotten some additional adequacy aid.
Right.
You know, and everybody celebrated that, a couple hundred thousand there. But then if you look at that up next to the Medicaid, you know, change, then you lose two-hundred thousand. So it's, you know, out of one pocket into another kind of a situation. But I, I feel much more comfortable with representing the revenue side of the equation.
Okay.
Because that's not the financial, you know, it's not the educational plan part.
Right.
And I'd feel, I don't want to mislead someone with-
Right. It just, it just hit me.
With how that plays out, but-
On that, on that last point about, you know, limited access to, you know, the part-time business administrators. And I want to thank you very much for, you know, all, all of you done since you've been here. But in particular, in putting together this budget, that, you know, you came into a situation where you didn't have a BA, and things, things were difficult for you to find. Just basic information, you know, as it would be in any new situation you come into. It, it's different than, than what you're accustomed to. You know, and you, you've been here, which is unsustainable, which is in part why the interim assistant super position is needed. You've been here almost every night, you know, late, for many weeks now. You know, there'd be times I'll drive by and see Susan here at nine, nine-thirty at night. Not, not stalking you, Susan, just going into town. And, but, I mean, in, in weekends. And I, I don't know, I don't know if people appreciate that in the public, just how much. And that, and that's not just for putting this budget together, but for all else. There were numerous hirings that needed to take place, and those don't just happen. I mean, they, you know, a guidance counselor, you know, when you came in the door, you know, a, a assistant principal, no, there was no BA. We tried to, we went through, you, you organized the hiring process involving folks in different buildings, but made the, I think, the wise decision. You didn't get the person you, you thought ultimately you wanted. And so you, you didn't just accept what was there. You postponed it, and we'll go into the hiring process in, in the coming year. I am leaving out more than I've mentioned in terms of the things that you've had to do since you've been here. And I, I just wanted to, I wanted to mention that publicly because I don't know if folks appreciate it. They don't, they don't see you there every day. And, and I know that it's, not only is the ti- you know, you, you've been here weekends. I don't know if you, you've not been here a weekend since you've been here, if people, you know, appreciate that. But also, I know in, in speaking to you, that you're chomping at the bit to get at, at the good stuff, at the visioning, and, and to not be sort of putting out fires. I see light at the end of that tunnel, and I think we're turning the corner. You know, you do have some BA help now. We'll hopefully have a permanent BA sometime in the spring. The interim superintendent started this week on Monday, so that will hopefully provide some relief. But I just want to, I want to thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Your kids are worth it. They really, really are. I appreciate the sentiment.
Okay, so we're on to approval of minutes. Anybody, can somebody make a motion?
I make a motion to approve minutes from November twenty-first, twenty nineteen, public and non-public minutes.
I second.
Any, any changes, thoughts? Nothing? If, if all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. The manifest, I didn't see that little blue one.
Oh, it's here.
Right there. Oh, they changed the color.
Oh, it's all ripped apart.
Oh, wow.
So they went with orange.
All right. We'll have to sign them before we leave.
I move that we approve the total of all manifests of eight-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand, four-hundred-and-seven dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Second that.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Okay, and now the big one, approve the FY twenty-one budget. Are there any further questions on the budget?
I just, we all are going to be there Monday?
I cannot be there Monday.
Okay.
I'll be there.
Okay.
I shall be there? And what time is that, Monday? Do we know? Seven o'clock, same time, downstairs?
Downstairs.
Okay. Any other questions on that, on the draft budget?
No questions.
No, again, you can't thank her, but you can't thank her enough. Like, nobody knows.
You know, it takes, it takes more to reduce something to a minimum than it, than just to, you know, put together a long document. This is so well-written, you know, it's, and it takes time to do that, to edit it and to narrow it down, and just to make it readable, so.
And I'd like to thank the budget committee for being patient with us and understanding. So I look forward to them looking at it tonight. But I make a motion to approve the year twenty-one budget, twenty-twenty-one budget, proposed.
I second.
If no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay. And now the, there's a nomination for a long-term substitute music teacher.
So our music teacher, beloved music teacher, had a child. And she was hoping to, or planning on coming back after her maternity leave, but felt, you know, after having her child, that she would like to request a child-rearing leave, which you supported, and I supported as well. And so I'm moving forward a nomination to, for her replacement to continue on for the rest of the year. So it's not a change, you know, it's, it's just approving her. I've requested a waiver for her, so she's applied for her certification. She's been doing a great job this year. She has a couple of years of teaching experience in the private sector, and she seems to have a really good rapport with the kids. And I've observed the class myself, and, you know, so anyways, my recommendation is to hire Liz Miller to continue for the remainder of the year.
All right.
That's a recommendation. Is there any discussion? If none, can I entertain a motion to approve that nomination?
I move that we approve this nomination.
Second?
And I second it.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then we have two donations.
Oh, yes. Mr. Sawyer, I believe.
Yep.
Mr. Sawyer, I understand more. Yes, so Mr. Sawyer is donating a thousand dollars to each school. One for the elementary school being, and the other one is to help support the guidance department. And so we're thrilled, you know, that he's providing us with these, you know, generous resources in support of our, our program. So, thank you, Mr. Sawyer.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Definitely appreciate that. And may I entertain a motion to accept those donations?
I move to accept those donations.
I'll second.
Thank you once again, and all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And we'll get a letter of thanks out. Thank you.
Absolutely.
So I don't know if we have any reason to go into non-public, you know, since we don't, and that's the end of the agenda. I think we're adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thanks for coming.
Do we need to do a motion, like?
I don't know if we do, but we can. Motion to adjourn.